I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Jenny David.
Here.
Greg Scott.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Here.
Mark Serbuk.
Present.
Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Where are we at on the chain out there?
I.
Any good ask that we issue an RFP for that as I remember?
We have.
We have not yet. I got three other ones out right now that we're ahead of it.
Okay.
What are the other three?
At the annex building, we have our for snow plowing, which is due this week. And third one was for demo on a lamb bake house.
Oh. So is there a timeframe on do we just put that in two weeks on the committee of the whole?
You won't you won't have an R response within two weeks. Those are usual thirty day turnaround to get the PNC in. So maybe the next the next town meeting, but the one after that.
Okay.
Have replies.
So to make sure we're staying on it.
Oh, yes.
Are you okay with that Commissioner Scott? Any any other additions or corrections? Item two is public comment. This is for agenda items only. Same rules apply. Three minutes. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item three appointments Ryan Veder planning and zoning administrator related to applications for appointment. Mr. Veder, come on up.
Morning.
Morning. Seen you last night.
Yes.
It was nice to see you at the meeting.
It's nice to get out to them. So you have in front of you. Unfortunately, we had one resignation. George Goodchild did resign. He was our planning commission member and also our DAs on the zoning board of appeals. So Dan Demzolski is a current planning commission member. He has graciously going to provide that seat on the zoning board of appeals for us as well. And then we have a new a new planning member Chad Beck, who is interested in taking that spot. I think there was a letter. I think I had a recommendation letter in.
Yep.
Chad's a very good individual farming. He's a dairy farmer, very important part of Old McComey. So it'd be nice to have individual with his experience on planning.
Any questions? All the information was here.
I spoke with Chad. His dad used to sit on.
That's what it said.
Years ago.
Okay, so we'll have that for a resolution.
Yes.
Uh zoning boarding of appeals.
That was for for Dan for Dan Demzolski. He is taking George's spot.
Oh.
The CBA.
One position is a lay of office. They sit on both boards. Yep.
Is that it for you?
That is it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Veder.
You're welcome.
Item B Leanne Fisher related to housing consulting services.
Leanne couldn't be here today, but this is a she's put forward actually a resolution that required through the Mishda program for their project hope grant. They need a resolution from the board allowing the county to apply for the grant. And so that's that's all this does. And then once the grants awarded, of course, we'll be back and you'll you'll see the dollar amounts and everything associated with it.
She's been very successful in the past getting grants even over above what she's asked for.
I sent a lot of people her way. And I like this breakdown she had in there of the years eighty-three to twenty twenty-one.
Pretty impressive.
It was. Any questions? She also, did you want to give us that that property was sold? I don't know if the other commissioners are aware of that. I got a phone call Friday about nine fifteen. I was ten miles out of my pedal bike. And it was Leanne saying, hey, I I think we have a buyer on that house. You have about twenty minutes to sign the documents. I said, that's not gonna happen. I said, we're gonna have to ask for at least an hour long extension. So anyways, it all happened when I got back and she emailed me all the information and I faxed it. And I believe it's, is it a done deal?
It's a done deal remarkably fast.
Is that Lake Ridge Road?
I think that's right.
I looked at it. Yeah, last Friday. And I think it was a cash sale, correct?
It was a cash sale. Yeah.
So it all happened very quickly and she was acting on it very, very quickly.
James will stop calling me about the wine now.
Hopefully. Um, there's nothing more on that, correct?
No.
Item C Tom Spencer, information technology director, Polycom interactive video systems. Morning, Tom.
Um, I've had several complaints about the video conferencing system at the jail that is used for the courts. It's outdated. It's old. There's been a lot of feedback issues and working with Lieutenant Oger, we thought that maybe there was some funding out there to where those were paid for by the by the state. And that holds partially true. The courts all get theirs paid for, but the jail does not. With COVID, there's been an horizon attorneys even remoting in now and meeting with inmates versus going inside the jail. So I reached out to Jim Ewing, who is the fellow at the Michigan Supreme Court who maintains this equipment and got a quote from him for a replacement unit for it. We've already replaced a TV over there. I have the microphone wrapped in washcloth right now with a note that says, don't touch, because there's been that many issues with it. I get text messages from attorneys with problems, so it definitely needs to be replaced.
The cost wasn't too bad. Did I look at that?
Twenty twenty-two hundred.
Yeah.
Now, was that part of the I was looking on your infrastructure plan. Was that part of the infrastructure plan for next year?
No, not not for anything to do with me. I never put that in there.
It's the court. Court equipment or is it ours?
It's gonna be the jail. It's gonna come out of the jail funding, but it's used for the courts. But unfortunately, the courts don't pay for the jail Polycom, but the courts pay for district circuit.
They cut me off at the pass. That's where I was going. Is the court gonna pay for it?
No.
No. Okay. That's I tried to when I reached out, I tried to get to find out if there was funding for the jail. And Jim says, no, they don't cover the cost for the jails.
They will cover one way cost, not two way cost.
Right.
Questions on that? I didn't think that cost was bad at all.
No. What is causing the failures that you're complaining about?
A lot of feedback. And when I reached out to Jim, I knew there was a setting in there to adjust the gain of the microphone, but it's in all our other units because they're newer. So there's no setting in there to turn down the gain of that. And the thought process was maybe to try and put some like sound devices in there. The feedback is horrible. And if it gets turned up, people can't hear, then it literally will start squealing. And you can pick up every little noise. You could hear somebody talking on the other side of the brick wall. It's that sensitive. So I looked, it was manufactured in two thousand fourteen. We've already replaced the TV in there. And it's only a matter of time, I think, before it dies. Anyways, the Michigan Supreme Court will provide a Polycom to the jail, but it's all hand-me-downs. They won't provide a new unit. They'll they'll provide whatever parts they have later on.
And and the equipment over here has already been updated?
Correct.
Are you gonna go get this equipment?
Yeah, it's actually all through Jim. So he's, I don't know, I'm still, I guess, unclear on how he works. Jim is the guy at the Michigan Supreme Court that does all the video systems. I've only ever talked to him, but I think he's an LLC. I think he is like a contractor underneath the Supreme Court. So he provided the quote for the equipment. I didn't reach out. And if you look on the one side, he's sourcing it from CDW. That's part of that's the same people we get our stuff from. It's all part of my deal. And I would imagine being that it's Supreme Court, it's gonna be part of that. He didn't itemize the the quote, so I can't really see what the actual unit's costing, but I really can't do anything with without him anyways. I can't really go off and source it and say, hey, Jim, can you hook this up for us? I think this kind of is baby.
Is this a basic system or is this more of a better best best?
I'd say it's probably.
Good, better, better. But it goes better, best?
I guess. I mean, you could. I'm sure that there's larger Polycom systems out there, but we're talking a.
I'll make it a rule.
Five five.
Okay.
Can we put any questions? Any other questions?
Well, I would think a transfer of the commissary fund would surely pay for this without looking at that budget.
Don't they decide where?
The board decides where where things come from.
Who does?
The board.
What's the recommendations?
I think.
Commissar.
You agree with that?
We're on the commissary.
Okay.
Sure qualifies for it.
Any other questions for Tom? Put that on for resolution. Is that it, Tom?
Yep.
Thank you. Next, we have Brett Gildner, clerk related to elections desk purchase.
So we have a grant opportunity. As the county clerk, I have sixteen different precincts and I get a hundred and fifty dollars per precinct to purchase election related stuff. There's a whole list of things. So we got a new monitor already. So I'm asking now to get a desk for the election set up in my office.
Where are you gonna put that?
I'm gonna take the whole desk out.
Oh, I thought you had all new desks.
No, not the election stuff.
How do we miss that?
We didn't want to spend money.
No, we didn't because it's a grant.
Yeah, so you got two. You got two bids. Two, yep, two bids. Both local. The either one of them will match the desks that are in there already, but Office Central was
Quite a bit cheaper.
Better.
And this is a grant?
Yes.
So a hundred percent?
Hundred percent covered. Yep.
So we don't have an issue, do we guys?
No.
We're we're approving the grant right now, right?
No.
Proving. Oh, we have to approve the grant before we?
Wow. Do you know that?
Grant or is it just the allocation you receive from the state for elections? It's a reimbursement.
Yeah, it's a reimbursement.
Reimbursement. So it's not really a grant.
Yeah.
This is the part of the state's obligation to the municipalities to conduct the election. So that's why you don't have a resolution for a grant. Here we're just looking at the resolution to make the purchase.
But it's guaranteed.
Guaranteed.
Yeah.
What's the turnaround on that?
How quick I can get the desk or what?
The reimbursement for it.
That I'm not sure.
It'll be within the fiscal year.
It's, yeah.
Questions? Commissioner Newbecker? So, Book Commissioner Scott.
Good with it.
Okay, we'll put that on for resolution.
Thank you.
Item four A ORB ordinance revisions.
You've got a handout that shows what we proposed on June twenty-third was which was to strike the last sentence in the definition of ORB. And the attorney is fine with that, but he suggests that consideration be given to the statutory definition of an ORB. But you can see it's a bit more wordy, but it does seem to have the same impact of getting rid of that reference to the thirty inches on the various wheeled vehicles. So there's not a wrong answer here, but his suggestion is just for consistency to stick with the statutory definition and to insert that in place of what we have in item G under our definition.
Commissioner Scott, did you have anything since you're pretty educated in this department?
That fits.
Commissioner Serbuk.
I think we definitely need to do the statutory definition. It's good.
So now we don't have to hold another public hearing, do we?
Don't have to have a hearing, but you do have to pass the ordinance.
Okay, so we need to put that on for resolution.
Right.
Any other questions? And this is what the attorney recommended.
Yes.
The rest of it's good.
Rest of it's good.
Okay. Item four B emergency dispatch services nine one one millage. Jesse, do you want to come on up?
Good morning.
Good morning. Stick on the lead on this.
I can do it. This is the language that was reviewed by the county attorney and what his recommendation is. Touch on a few points. First of all, this language reset that village at point seven five mil. Currently, it's point seven four nine four. That is the result of the annual headly rollbacks see on every millage. And you might remember that was conversation understand a few years ago with the county operating village about the headly rollback and having voters say, we're going to reset the village to the what the county operating village was. This in effect does the same thing for the nine one one village itself. The advantage that nine one one has is that this is like a five-year millage. So this question comes up every five years. So you have the opportunity to reset it with the millage in that question each of those years. So send it back to what was the original point seven five mil. Language that you do see that's added is at the bottom of the actual proposal. If approved and levied, a portion of the millage may also be dispersed in accordance with state law to the downtown development authorities of the city of West Branch and the township of West Branch. Now, this is go back a few meetings to our conversation about these DDAs and these captures. These two DDAs were already set in place prior to nineteen ninety-four. There is some question on one of them about it being reset. We'll get into that at a future meeting. But for purposes of the dispatch authority, they are already collecting off from this millage. And they are allowed to continue to do that. Don't see Ogama Township on this list because you have a resolution that their motion that was passed after nineteen ninety-four that allowed the county to opt out of the captures on special villages and the county operating. So that particular motion said would not capture special villages, so they are not listed. Now let's go back to that reset to the point seven five. This really works out in favor of nine one one because with the reset, the capture clearly will not impact what their their budget is seeing coming in revenue over the past few years because it's being reset at a slightly higher amount. And just coincidentally, that's about the same amount that's going to be captured out of this millage. This is not a choice. Those two DDAs can capture. We can include that language or not. They're going to capture. That's just how it is. But the statute says that when there is capture and there is a special village proposal, you need to put that language in there so the voters understand that a portion of this is going to go to those DDAs and be captured. You're the only two Ogama Township, as you know, we're under discussions with the township about what to do after next year with those villages. That'll be resolved in those conversations. But for now, it's point seven five what those two DDAs capturing.
Commissioner Scott.
You said with the ratchet back point zone five, the differences is basically what they're capturing now?
Yeah, it's not a one to one, but it's it's gonna be close.
Point zero 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 six.
Well, that's remember, this is a millage that's going countywide.
Oh, I get that.
Just in the.
I get that. But some people think that it's like six percent, you know, it's sixty percent, you know, I mean, you're talking a fraction.
You know, six, what, six, ten, six hundredths of a percent. I get I get that's mixed up, but it's small.
Are they both capturing the same amount?
I know, because that's based on the assessment and growth of assessments within the districts themselves. And very unlikely that you would have a number that was the same. Because they're clearly different properties, different number of properties, different types of properties.
Percentage is the same. Or not.
Well, it wouldn't be because the assessment is going to determine what the growth is in the DDA. So if let's let's use the Meyer as an example, and this is not what happened with Meyer. Let's be very clear about that. But just as a example, the DDA is established, let's say, five years ago before Meyer is even contemplated. So the amount of tax dollars the county captures is frozen at what it was five years ago. Now along comes a Meyer parks on top of that. Now he still captures what the rate was five years ago for vacant property, but every dollar now.
Capture the developed.
Does not capture the develop. That's all captured now by the DDA district.
Gotcha.
So that's that property. Now another property may not develop, so it's not growing at that same rate, whereas this one is extreme.
Um, I I believe a couple of meetings ago had asked as far as where where nine one one's at financially.
Got you a three-year trend here from their audits. That'll show you their fund balance at nine one one. It's roughly seventy-four percent right now, which is it's a good healthy number for dispatch authority. And why I say that is because technology seems to change all the time. And nine one one centers don't generally have a lot of time to adjust that there's some technologies that they have to implement immediately. It's good to have a fund balance like that to be those kind of upgrades as they become.
We have been doing a lot of this year and next year's. There's there's many upgrades that we are neat. We are so behind on the technology and the programs that we are running. Next month, we're going with the new CAD system, computer aided dispatching system. That was a lot of money. We're in the works of getting it all together this month. Actually, I'm in ISCO most of the month, working with them on that.
So currently, if I am I looking at this right, the total fund balance is seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars?
That was at the end of their last fiscal year, September thirtieth of twenty-one. Probably it's higher than that right now, but without diving into their books. No way to know. And plus villages aren't collected. Yeah, wait, yours is collected in December, is it?
Yes.
Okay, so never mind.
Yeah, some of that's gonna be gone here shortly. I gotta pay for the Motorola system that we're having put in. And we're contemplating new desks at this time. Our desks are fifteen years old and none of them work. They're not even ergonomically like just what Brett went through in the clerk's office. They're not functional for for your employees. So we're looking at that right now as well.
And and the reason I ask that is because I know I understand now, I believe, that we have to ask for this point seven five per thousand. Because once the millage rate is set, it can't go up, but it can go down.
It will go down.
Correct.
All right, we'll get all that.
Yeah.
So a headly rollback will happen every year.
So like we did, we took a look at those villages last year and and some of the services hadn't been provided. Some of the fund balances were were high. So those villages, we cut a lot of those villages for that reason. Is that looked at on a so this this is good for five years, correct?
Correct.
So is that looked at annually as far as giving taxpayers a break, where your fund balance is, what's needed in the next year, what?
The board, the board has taken that into consideration. And with everything that's, I mean, our wages that went up, our our equipment, our servers. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's gonna have to be replaced here in the next couple of years. This I believe was the same as the last year. They didn't raise it and they didn't lower it, but obviously prices have went up. Wages have went up, so all that's gotta be considered. And that's why we kept it at the same.
Great. But your fund balance from your years went up quite a bit, too. Nineteen, twenty, and twenty.
The only thing that we had left at the end of last year after everything was paid was, I want to say it was under two hundred thousand.
Your fund balance?
According to your audit, it was seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Yeah, that's because things weren't paid for at that time, but they were budgeted for, but didn't the bills didn't come in through, so it wasn't taken out of the fund balance.
Some of that's reserved then.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's kind of what the public needs to see.
And this isn't, this this fund balance is not a cumulative. Right?
Why is it not?
We're not, we're not seeing once twenty-one added added to twenty.
No, you're not. So these fund balances that you see each year are independent standalone. At the end of that year, at the end of nineteen, it was three seventy-four. At the end of twenty, it was six forty-five. At the end of twenty-one, it was seven sixty-nine.
Why are they not commute? I mean.
They don't add them together. There's.
It's an audit of one year.
Right.
That's it.
So this isn't a very clear picture.
I think it's very clear.
Oh, yeah, it's clear for that year.
Seeing for twenty-one, there was surplus funds, if you will, of a hundred and twenty-four thousand. So that that was added to the prior year's fund balance of the six forty-five to get you the seven sixty-nine. The prior year, there was a surplus at two seventy, so that got to six forty-five. Year before that, in nineteen, the surplus was three hundred and seventy-four thousand. That was your first year. So
Right.
It was, that was the surplus.
Questions, commissioners?
Once we get the new CAD in there, that's what we talked about. The GPS was talked about. Then that can be incorporated into that, too.
You mean the cost?
Yeah, that'll be coming.
Commissioner Newbecker?
I agree with that. I honestly think that this county needs that.
Any questions with the millage? Commissioner Serbuk? Commissioner Scott? What are you thinking?
Yeah.
What what happens if this village wasn't to pass?
We have, we have two. We would actually go for it again in April. I believe it is April or May.
Then it's up to the commissioners whether or not nine one one is going to.
Oh, gosh.
Continue or not. It'll fall on us.
How many villages are on countywide on the November ballot?
Countywide or like like their individual? Member.
This one and what's the other one?
We didn't ask.
Is this the only village? That's that's on there.
It's for countywide?
Countywide.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I was.
Yeah.
Yeah, countywide, yes.
That's why the road commission was complaining. They want a countywide millage. They wanted Jeff for it. Well, they'd rather complain they don't need it, I guess.
Yeah, because a lot of others. Did you have a question? Anything you wanted to add? So we're just approving the language for this to go on the ballot.
Right.
Correct. It's your guys' job to sell it.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Hi, jobs is okay, this this language.
Correct.
I mean, is there any other option for us? Is there any?
Clearly, I mean, if you didn't agree with the point seven five and you would prefer it to be a different number, you could do that. I mean, this will be the time to do it, and then it would be inserted in the language. And that's what the clerk would receive to put on the ballot. So literally the whole thing is your call. You could vote it up or down. You can change that millage number. You can really, there's really nothing else to do than that.
Do you think?
What's Jenny, what's your question here? Is your question, is there a different way of doing this village or is there a different way of doing it nine one one?
Neither.
Okay.
My question is, is if we need to attempt to, obviously, we definitely want this to be passed to to go through. Is if if we need to attempt to collect the zero point seven five or if it can be reduced, obviously financially, people are hurting right now. I don't foresee that getting any better anytime soon. And I think our job is to try to get this through. Wondering if if they could maintain the same with collecting less, if the same services, the same everything improvements.
Good question.
That's my question. Can we give our taxpayers a break?
We did the same thing to the other villages that we cut back.
We did. And that was my question because once we lower that rate, we can't, it can't, as a standard, we can't increase. But if this is on the ballot, it's zero, say, what, zero point five zero or or then each year, they can't, they can't raise it back to point seven five. They can reduce it, but they can't bring it back up.
Oh, yeah. At the end of next year, this time, we could be talking.
It's the five-year millage.
Correct.
It's a five-year, it's a year.
It's gonna set the cap.
That's my.
The seven five is.
Right.
But each year we have the, don't we have the option then? Or is that to our villages?
The next year, you could set decide, well, we're only gonna collect point five.
And then the next year, go back to point seven five.
Whatever the rollback tells you.
You just can't ever go any higher.
You're setting the cap.
Right.
Right.
Right, that was my question. Can we set that cap any lower than point seven five and still maintain the current services?
Well. But why not keep it at point seven five and reduce it only one year? That's what we did with the sheriff's
Right.
Office and we did it with the.
Right. Again, just trying to sell this to get this to go through. Because constituents are definitely financially hurting.
I get that.
And I don't foresee that getting better in the next And I don't foresee that getting better in the next four to five years, couple of years.
If we're gonna operate the same way we're, we're operating, then I think you're gonna have to do this. We looked at other op, other modes of operation. Probably greatly reduces, but the kingdom is built and they don't wanna get out of the kingdom.
Well, it seems to be working very well, but again, looking at this fund balance of if going up every year and, but apparently that's not where you guys are currently.
Correct. Because we have new equipment being bought on a regular basis. The state mandates the equipment that we use and the updates. For example, I'll give you guys a great example. This year, the state mandated us to update our mapping equipment because it was outdated so long ago. The state stepped in, said we had to do it. So that's something we're working on right now for our new system. We had to hire a company in the U.P. that's quite a bit of money to get that done. Although state stepped in and paid for quite a bit of it, it could've cost us about ninety thousand dollars. But the state has helped us with that because it's so outdated.
Do you guys wanna keep that at the zero point seven five?
I believe, I believe we need to this year in, in see how it ends up for next year. And then, then if we can lower it, then lower it.
Commissioner Becker?
I think it's fine where it's at right now. I think there, there are still some upgrades that need to happen and might not be a bad idea to kind of put together a picture of what that is. So that, not only the board, but the public can see the improvements and investments that we're making into this, into this millage and program. They're gonna benefit our community.
Absolutely. I can do that.
The more education and knowledge, the better.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Sorek?
We need to leave it where it is and we can revisit it, if we can lower it later on. It's lower, but let's leave the cap where it is.
Commissioner Sorek? Or excuse me, Commissioner Scott?
I concur.
Pardon me?
I concur. What he said. What he said?
Did I hear you right?
Would you actually agree to?
Did I hear you right?
So are you guys okay? But did you have anything else, Jesse? Wanna put that on?
What's your opinion?
I don't concur, but I, I need a clear picture as far as where they're at, as far as if we're gonna be asked questions from the general public. I personally would like it reduced. Or at least I would like a plan in front of me to be able to explain, this is the cost we're looking at for the next year. And, and my, my rationale behind that is, is, is because obviously, we want to, to really attempt to get this passed or that's a whole different scenario. And I, in my opinion, the best way to try to get that passed is, is to show that we're attempting to give the constituents a, a financial break. But again, I, I wanna see a picture where you're at, where you're headed, what the next fiscal year brings in order for me to make a better decision. Is that information you can get to us?
Absolutely. I don't know when your next meeting is, but.
Just a, a budget will do that for you.
I have. Yeah, yeah.
Their current.
Current.
And.
I have, I'm afraid I was just working on it yesterday.
Current and I guess the next, the next fiscal year.
In another three months, if you put in a, another budget.
So that way, where I, when I'm asked where, what, where you're at financially, you know, I, I could see those numbers. That, that's, that's my opinion.
Just for clarification, as you went around the table, I heard leave the cap where it is. Did you mean leave it at the point seven-five or the point seven?
Okay.
Yeah. Make sure I get the right number in there.
When's, what's the deadline? What's the deadline this has to be approved by?
August second, I think.
Filing deadline.
Yeah.
So do you guys want that put on next week? Would you like, I personally would like more information to make a better decision, but, but I'm asking all of you now. Would you guys wanna go, just go forward with this without seeing further plans, further numbers? Or would you like to put this on?
I can, if it would help you, I don't have from going to the last board meeting in the month. You need a couple of weeks to digest something, that's fine with me.
I need to educate myself better.
I'm gonna vote for that, but.
I'm only one vote, so.
I get it.
Commissioner Sorek?
If, I don't have an issue with waiting a few weeks for the documentation.
We need to make sure that we need to collect these monies. So you're okay with waiting?
I am.
Commissioner Van?
We can wait. You know, it's still gotta be, still gotta be done.
As long as we don't meet, as long as we don't miss the deadline.
Yeah.
Filing deadline is August second. The ballot wording is August sixteen.
So we'll have it by August. Is two weeks enough for you to give us, get us the information? Yeah, okay. So will you come back at the next committee of the hall, which is two weeks at five-thirty?
Sure.
Are you guys good with that?
That, by thirty or is that gonna be by?
No, that's August. It's five-thirty. Okay, thank you.
Told you.
Item. I don't know.
Next, next committee in the hall.
Yeah.
Thanks for this info though.
High Banks Maintenance Plan, item four C.
So this was put on the agenda following conversation at prior meeting about High Banks and what we're gonna do there in the future. Had a conversation with the chair yesterday. The question was, shouldn't we be talking about this, but in context of the entire capital improvements plan? And the answer is, short answer is yes, you certainly can. And it's been a few days since I put this material together, but I know that I included the capital improvements plan and the inventory of all the properties on the meeting, with the meeting documents for today. So it was already there. So however you wanna proceed with that, I am not familiar with the High Banks itself to really know what needs to be done and how to go about scheduling that. I'm not even sure what it, but its function is, so.
You want maintenance or you want improvement?
Um, I think both. I mean, obviously, I printed off the Ogama County properties and I, I think we definitely need to, first of all, acknowledge these. Second of all, make sure that we are taking care of them. Some of these properties we, we didn't even know about.
When we sold it to Mills.
Well, that wasn't my, that's where I was headed. Um, I guess, why, does anyone know the history on this of why we own this? Ooh.
Somebody.
Who would know that?
Just raise your hand.
Registered deeds.
That's where it's nice.
Have to look in, in.
I don't.
There's some kind of covenant or something, that somebody gave it to us or.
Whatever it's all is, that, that pretty much is it. And we somehow got it. That, I don't know that there are any covenants to it, I haven't read that deeply into the deed itself.
You know.
Well, what are we?
Like a state, if the state DNR gave it to the county, you know, we wanna do anything other than a park, they may take it back.
Well, what are we doing with the rest of these properties? There's quite a few on here. I don't even know what all of these are.
A lot of them are right around the airport. You got a lot of parcels there and it's, it's inclusive in the airport property. It's just parcels, different parcels of land. Some are, some are small, some are larger.
What's this on Fairview Road? Section twenty?
That's the just north of Township Hall, where they sell the cattle.
Okay, so is that maintained? Is that, who mows it? Who maintains it?
There's a, um, there's a lease on it. The, there's a.
Twenty-five-year lease?
Association that has a lease on it and they maintain it.
So they do? Are you sure on that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um.
Maintain.
The rest of these are right at the airport. Ogama Hills Rec Complex, Flowage Lake Dam.
Right.
Who maintains, what do we do there?
Well, the drain commissioner, drain commissioner takes care of the dam.
Okay, is that the only maintenance upkeep? Is that?
Well, he, he can.
There's a special district for, pays for maintenance.
So who does it, since the county owns it?
The drain commissioner is in charge of that. He's an elective official.
Okay.
So he, he maintains, if work has to be done on it, then.
He contracts.
He contracts it out, just.
But the county plays for it.
That would be paid for.
Well, probably from that assessment.
It's from the assessment.
Okay.
And there's probably other.
Say it's a brand-new dam.
Got some parking lots on there, which I think we're okay with them. We got a right street storage shed.
Right, that's right over here by this parking lot over here.
Yep.
Garage there.
So do we do anything for maintenance there, anything?
Chris handles that.
Okay. I think we need to go through these one by one, so we all know exactly what's going on.
That's where the lawnmower start in the winter time.
I think so, yeah.
We got the annex building, the county building and sheriff's office, daytime treatment facility. Fordview Acres Road in Hill Township. Pardon me?
It's a right-of-way.
So what do we do with that?
Right-of-way.
Which one is that?
Second to the last?
The last.
Right-of-way.
Does anybody, who represents Hill?
I do, but I don't know.
Pardon me?
Wait, I'm not sure what it is.
Point one of an acre.
Yeah, it's not very big.
I know, but.
Yeah, it's a right-of-way, it's five, six.
To what?
Maybe, I don't know. To the lake or something, I don't know.
I don't either. And then the nature park and, and Foster Township.
Right.
So is that, did you guys look this over? I mean, you guys know where everything else is?
I'll catch up to the supervisor and ask him what it is, 'cause I have no idea.
We have the east of airport, the airport maintains all, all of these parcels here?
Yeah.
And then we have the airport, we have transit, west of airport, the airport maintains all of that as well?
Yeah.
It's colon with the city of West Branch.
I don't know if that it's colon.
There's one parcel, looks up, there's an escrow and it says colon.
Oh, I see.
A couple of them.
A couple of them are, yeah.
Roadside Park in Ogama Township.
They own Pointer Hill, roadside park.
Wasn't that brought up in discussion as far as?
We talked about Chris cuts the lawn. There is a radio tower up there that should have a contract receiving, receiving revenue from, rental revenue from.
Do we?
I've been told back a couple of terms ago that we were.
Big recollection of one on the list, but we can go through our list of contracts and see what's there.
It was originally with State Electronics and they sold it, they sold their lease rights to another nationwide company that I can't remember the name of, but off the top of my head, to the tower.
So Chris maintains the, the grass and.
He goes up there and mows.
Upkeep, if anything needs to be.
Before I seventy-five, of course, M seventy-six was the highway.
Yep.
And there's nice little roadside parks. You say, well, it still does have a high perch where you can, used to be able to see town before the trees all grew up. But then seventy-five made the highway obsolete really, for travelers north.
So the biggest one here is, I'm sorry, read them. Was the Wright River Banks Canoe Launch, that's seven point six-three acres.
That's what you thought.
Well, I mean, I think we needed to grasp on all of these. I think we should know what the county owns, but I definitely, this one needs to be discussed. I took a walk out there, I don't know, it's been a month or two ago, month anyways. And, and as we know, the last two years, there's been some volunteers to stain it. There's definitely upkeep there. It's utilized a lot by canoeers, people who fish. I would think the liability there's quite high. We need a plan. Mills Township has asked me what the plan is, what our plan is for maintenance. That's a valid question. It needs to look nice.
Is there any, any part of this that Mills Township wants to help with?
Already have.
They stained it the last two years.
Okay, that's, that's already happened now.
Also made upgrades.
So, but what she's saying is she wants to go forward. You're telling her what happened already.
I wanna plan to go back to them to say, this is, this is what the county's going to do to maintain those properties. When you drive by and the grass is tall and looks awful.
My question is, is do they wanna be any part of the maintenance going forward?
I, I haven't asked them, I guess, I think they've just taken the lead because we haven't. And, and that's.
Commissioner Vaughn and I sit on the Parks and Rec Committee. Our plate's pretty full now. I'm not speaking for them, but I'm just saying, I'm the chairman of the committee. Our plate's pretty full now, but if we were to take on another piece of park property in the county, there'll have to be an increase into the park revenue for sure. That's not gonna, the RV park gains us revenue. We're able to charge for it. The nature park does pretty good with, with
fundraisers.
donations and things like that. And then there's a five-one-C, three group that's, that's making money for it also. This would be completely cost.
I would think there would be some grants or something for this as well, to help with the maintenance on this.
Well, once again, if you put it under the Parks and Rec, I don't think that, the plate's full now. I don't think we wanna go and search out grants and everything else for that. Now, if you wanna keep it under the commissioners.
I guess, why would it not fall? Cause it's, it's a, it's a, essentially a park.
It is.
Why, and it's under the county, so why would it not fall underneath the Parks and Rec?
Well, all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, first of all, any cost there is gonna be a cost. So the Parks and Rec Board would ask commissioners, I don't think they would ask commissioners to increase the budget for it, okay?
That's fair.
Well.
If you're adding on, absolutely.
Okay. I'll just quickly give you a couple of things that happened to me while I, when I became commissioner. People came to me and said, the deer park, you're talking about laying people off and you're feeding deer. And I said, wow, you know, okay, let's talk to the Parks and Rec Board. Well, most of them are in Florida, because the board hadn't changed much and they'd all gotten to where the retirement age. And so then we changed, the, the board changed a lot and we started fundraising in different manners to keep it going. The RV park was funding a lot of that. But the RV park needed a lot of improvements too. So it has, in, in recent years, it hasn't been able to fund the nature park. So a group got together and formed a five-one-C to, to gen- generate more money for the nature park, so the RV park could get its improvements. So far, the county isn't outlaying general fund money for either park. You wanna improve this park, it's gonna be general fund dollars. I'm gonna tell you that right now.
I don't know necessarily improve, I mean, obviously, yes, but definitely maintain, and we have not been.
Okay, well, what do you think it's gonna cost to maintain it?
Oh, I, I.
Hundred bucks a year, a thousand bucks.
I don't think I'm the one to answer.
Dollars a year.
I don't think I'm the one to answer that question.
Well.
Obviously, this is.
I guess you've been there.
I, I've walked it. Have you ever been there?
Oh, no, I've never been there.
It's utilized quite a bit by canoes. Lance, you're, you're in that township. Can you add to, to the High Banks at all as far as any information you're able to give?
To me, I would, but it's not, they're not gonna spend.
I understand that, but I mean, as far as a description of the properties for these, these individuals that do not know what we're talking about.
I didn't know, seven acres?
The total, yeah.
I didn't know it was that big.
There's four separate parcels here.
Painted in the past, I mean, we painted the fence and stuff like that when I was supervisor, but that's special. When I was supervisor, that's special.
It's down to the, it's, it's around, it's on the opposite side of Lake Ogama and it's basically straight down. Oh, I, I.
I just haven't been.
I took it as you hadn't been there, it's straight down to the river.
I just haven't walked down there.
Straight down to the river, lots of stairs, there's a canoe launch that's straight down. It is very nice, but.
It is, a lot of people told me that.
When I walked it, some trees needed cleaned up, the stairs needed shoveled, because of the dirt and that's just going to rot them.
We have done that in the past.
Yeah, I didn't get this, I did not get the sense that that's being done. So it definitely was brought to my attention that the county owned it, which I was not aware.
I didn't know that either. I thought it was just a piece of land.
So, and. With this also, with that cleaning up, it's got to be a liability, I mean, there's trees down. What is your recommendations you have here?
Well, I'd like to get my mind around what we're dealing with, I've not been there, I see it on paper, that's my extent, I have no.
The only thing you see when you go by is the parking lot.
Correct. Then it's a straight, straight down.
It's a sandy hill down, the kids used to roll down the hill down the river, climb back up the hill, it's all safe.
And now it's stairs, and it's steep, I mean, it's, there's a lot of stairs, a lot.
The high banks for a good reason.
Off the top of my head, you said there's a parking area there too, it's like a parking lot?
There is, yes.
A lot of fishermen.
Pretty good size.
A lot.
Okay, so we're probably responsible for that too, for the maintenance of that, so.
Probably one of those parcels that we're looking at.
Possibly, so, but, yeah, I mean, we've got a number of different variables in here that we need to consider, it's not something you're going to resolve. How, how often, or even what the stairs are made up, how often they should be maintained, I mean, how often should the planks be repolled?
That's what I'm saying, should we replace? If we replace, you could be looking at a quarter of a million dollars.
They were replaced, I don't want to give a timeframe here, but it has been rebuilt, I, it has been rebuilt, I don't know who rebuilt it, it was quite a few years ago. It, it, that aspect of it's in pretty good shape right now, but again, it needs to be shoveled, because dirt is just sitting on there and going to rot a lot quicker. Who would be an individual that we could send out to look at this property, would it be Chris, would it be?
Send the building guy.
Maybe, or even.
Or an engineer.
Hiring, yeah, Laughlin is represented even on the Parks Board, maybe they could go out and give us an evaluation, that'll cost a little bit of money, but I don't frankly know what's there, and how often should we expect to have to replace some of the stairs, or, I mean, I have no idea at the lifetime.
Can we sell this to Mills Township?
You can sell it to anybody, unless it's speed restricted, we'd want to check that out.
What's the value of having it, the county?
The only value is the public being able to use it to access the river.
That's fair.
But there's a lot of.
Sure you own it?
Yes.
Yeah.
As far as the liability, I think that we need to, we have our insurance company to go out and look at it. To tell us what they would recommend.
Next question, does the township want it?
Well, I don't think we're to that point yet, we have to see what is, what's the value to us, why do we own this?
We'd have to go back and see if there's any indication in the deeds as to why it came to the county's possession, the latest parcel came into possession on January seventeen nineteen eighty-nine, so that's a relatively recent document compared to some of the others that we see on, on the list here, so if there is, you know, some reason for it, it might be recorded in there, it might be, well, I want to deed this to the county for a tax write-off. That could be something that's that simple, I.
Could be a lot of, no, it came from the DNR.
But to the point, yeah, so the point though, that it is ours right now, if we're going to continue to own this, yes, we should have some kind of a maintenance plan, so that we make sure that our, our risks are minimized.
Or, or a closure plan.
Or a closure plan that says.
I mean, let's, let's, you got to take a look at all the ranges here, right from, if, like, like Brian said, does township want it? Well, then the next question is, the county want it? Do we really want a liability, do we really want something that's going to cost a lot of dollars to put in?
I think initially I agree, we need to find out why we have it, how much it's going to cost to maintain with Laughlin and with our insurance company.
Just a caution, we might not find out why we have it, it just, we have these deeds that's in our name, there's no record as to what the intent was.
If that's what we find out, then, then it's ours no matter what, okay, then, then we got to make decisions what we're going to do with it.
Can you continue to put this on the committee of the whole and do some research for us?
Yeah, in fact, registered deeds has already provided me with quite a file on all these parcels, so at least for our next committee of the whole, we can focus on this one, I get you those documents, you can read them over, a lot of them are just going to give you meat and bones descriptions, so you'll skim right over those, but there may be some nugget in there that'll identify why we have it. Yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't changed much since I was, I think, when we first got a cabin up there, I was like fifth grade. On the right River Trail.
Oh, they, they did all those upgrades, there's a whole new set of stairs.
Yeah, that's.
Needs to be cleaned up, a lot more trees are falling down.
Yeah, the parking lot was put in.
Well, when I graduated high school, I went up there and planted grass on the side of that hill, when I worked for the conservation office. And there was no trees, it was all sand at that point. So it's, I mean, there's a lot of really good vegetation that's, it's grown in to help with the erosion, but now you've got a bunch of trees that have grown up and now they're starting to fall down. And as far as I'm concerned, there's some, there's some liabilities out there that need to be addressed. And I think we should look at, I think it's important to keep the public able to access that river, but there's obviously different sections there, so if we could get a description of which sections maybe we'd consider selling or, and then maybe keeping the launch or just looking at the property in general, just to see what we, what, what would be best for the county and for the public.
There's a lot of canoe launch, various canoe launches that use that.
Well, then, in that case, you may, you may rent, may rent out space for canoe liveries, if they're using it for free. Our, our RV park is for rent, somebody comes in there and wants to stay at the RV park, we don't let them stay there for free. They pay to stay in there, maybe these canoe liveries need to pay for the use of our property too.
Start charging the user fees, they're using it.
Jeez, guys.
A way to generate revenue for maintenance.
I understand.
You're sitting here ten minutes ago, talking about cutting back, the possibly cutting back a millage to save money for a, for a, a needed service, and now you're talking over here about spending money for a not needed service.
First of all, I wanted further information to make a better educated decision.
That's fine.
For this, we also have been offering these services for, for what period of time, I want more information on this property as well, before I can make a decision. But we definitely need a maintenance plan for liability reasons moving forward, and when I have a township asking me these types of questions, that's why it's being brought here.
Okay, that's fine, we can talk about it, I don't care, it's great to talk about it. I don't have a problem with that.
You'll do some research on that? Okay, and we won't drop this, put this on for next.
But, you know, the possibility, like Brad says, send the insurance company out there.
Absolutely.
Company looks at it and says, oh man, oh no way, you can't have these steps in the dirt like this, you need to build ADA compliant ramps system, I mean, you can't take a wheelchair down these steps. So if you're going to open this up to the public, you need ramp systems running down this thing, it sounds like the old piano starts playing, you know?
It's got to be on our insurance policy now.
What are you going to do now, when, when the first person with a wheelchair comes up to the top of them stairs and says, Jenny, I can't go down those stairs?
Again, as of right now, it's on our insurance policy, so it's up to them to know what the property is there.
You know, when you go to Mills Township meeting and they say, hey, one of our residents got a wheelchair, Jenny, and they can't go down to the bottom of the, the high banks.
I'm going to start by going to Mills Township next week and at least saying, we're, we're moving forward, we're coming up with a plan, I'll be back with more information.
Okay.
Next item, draft harassment in the workplace policy.
Our current policy is undated, I don't know how old it is, it looks like it's a courier font, so it tells me the nineties, early two thousands. And it is very basic, it simply says that the county won't tolerate harassment in the workplace, takes about a paragraph to do that, and that's the extent of it. This draft will actually define, you know, the different types of harassment, but I think more importantly, as you'll see is the movement's on page two, it will start is, what should an employee do if he or she believes they're being harassed, where do I report this? What happens after I report it, will there be retaliation? Those points are addressed here, and specifically, you know, referencing our obligations as well under state and federal statute to follow up on these things, take them seriously when they happen. This was actually brought to me by one of our union presidents who said, we really are lacking in this, we need to upgrade, I totally agree. One other component that comes with a policy like this is not only to make sure our employees are aware, but to provide an opportunity for training in this arena, at least in my opinion, at least every other year, our insurance carrier travelers has a nice online video that our employees can click on and, and review, so it's not like we need to bring in a special speaker or have a big seminar, oh, that's a possibility, we could do that, but to at least get us going in the right direction, travelers, we, we do have that opportunity. We can also, at that point, have our employees sign off saying that they viewed it, they understand what harassment is, and that if they had any questions, they would know who to call to ask those questions to get clarification. So this is an attempt to modernize what our current policy states and to comply with what our obligations are under the state and federal statutes, and to provide some guidance to our employees who believe they need to make use of the policy.
I, I had a question about it, it said a written complaint, is the written document easily to, for, for an individual to access, is it somewhere?
We haven't created one yet, obviously pending what the board wants to do with this, but if we could create a formal, and it would create just a formal form that we would put out with our other seamless docs that employees could access, but if an employee believes that they've been harassed, we won't necessarily require that document to be filled out, if somebody wants to write a narrative and turn it in, that would be sufficient, that would give us what we need to do is, or to identify what we need to do with our investigation internally, to determine what happened and what next steps need to be taken.
Well, just, my, my question there was, in just in case they're not comfortable going to their department head elected official or, or the county administrator, then they could just get online and, and do the written aspect, correct?
Yes, yes.
I think this should be annually, this is one that, that my organization, we have to review annually, we do have to watch a, a brief video, and we have to sign off that we've reviewed it, that we've watched it, and that, that's an annual, I, I think this is a pretty important one. Just to keep everybody educated up to date and in the back of their minds.
Well, each of the departments headed by an elected official have to adopt this on their, on their own tool.
They would, and we would strongly encourage them to do that.
But if they didn't, they wouldn't have to follow it.
If they didn't, they would have to create their own policy and their own method for review and, and everything else, this.
Because there has been some policies that, that this board has passed that other departments have not.
We would say encourage them, because that's a lot less work that department has to do independent, this is the package deal, it's, it's here, you know, sign off on it.
I think that's the key, is who is this really going to pertain to? Outside of every other elected official's office.
What do you mean?
Who's, who's this going to pertain to?
This one, pertain to all of your appointed departments. That would be our department administration, it would pertain to, or directly impact utilization right of way, building inspections, planning and zoning. The ones that you have direct authority to, I do not believe you'll get any pushback from the elected departments on this. I could be mistaken, but I doubt it, I, I think they would come under the fold and say, yes, this is what we'll adopt for our policy too, and then we have one set of rules across the board.
The only thing I would, that I question is, it's kind of broad, as far as investigation. Who's going to be completing the investigation? Normally we would have, you know, obviously an HR person, but in this case, we, I think we have an administrator and then also a personnel committee, right?
Personnel policy committee, I forget the exact title.
That's a valid question, where would that go, who would do the investigation?
Well, typically, it would fall to me to do that, if it were in a, an elected department. Say if something were to happen, because you're reading my eyesight, if it were to happen, corrections, there's a tenant or your, or perhaps the sheriff or undersheriff themselves would hit that up. If everybody adopted this policy, we could open it up and it could be me to investigate that complaint as well, if that's what the department wanted to do. But I definitely understand what your, your point is, we don't identify that who that's in here.
Then I don't think that you would want it to just be you, I would think you'd want some other eyes for yours.
I guarantee you, if a complaint was submitted, that I would be on the phone with our county attorney immediately as well, because these, these are serious, if, if they're, we're going to substantiate or not, we need to do it by the book, and that's, that's one backup I definitely would want.
Well, I, I, that's, that's obvious, but I would think from your point, point of view, having a either the personnel policy committee with you as a witness to the county or a board member, whatever, but I would think you'd want someone else involved. Who was, who didn't have a conflict of interest in that certain arena.
Do you want that better spelt out on, under E there, the, how complaint of harassment will be handled, do you want something different wording there?
Some sort, some sort of structure.
Him, you getting on.
Like a chain of command.
Catching on what he's saying.
Yeah, yeah.
What's, what's your opinion on that? Just as, as he just said.
I absolutely no problem with it at all, I mean, it's, it's a check and balance, and in this case too, it gets, the board to get some skin in the game, making sure that this is done and done correctly.
Well, it's just, you know, if, if anybody ever has an accusation against town, he's got a witness there.
Absolutely.
So we, it's just controls, keep, keep everybody honest.
So, again, you're going to maybe tweak that wording, add to it, would that be under E one?
Yeah, that's where I am.
And there's always going to be a, obviously a, a paper trail or some type of trail to follow all of this track.
Very, very heavily documented.
And if, if this does occur, the board is also informed of it?
You would be, you would be informed though, confidential documents, so that you're not obviously wanting to distribute that, yeah.
Is there any necessarily wording that needs to be in there about informing the board or a close session to privately inform the board, is, is there, I didn't see anything in there? It's just nice hearing it directly versus.
Not seeing it right away, so probably isn't here, but I think we would add maybe an item G at the very end, just stating the board shall be informed of all complaints or all investigation results or both.
And then, did you guys agree this needs to be an annual review for employees and signature?
Definitely.
A lot of workplace policies that need to be annual review.
New hire and annual.
Correct, new hire as well. So do you guys want this on for a resolution, can you, can you get this to us in plenty of time to review and we can call you with questions? You probably want this implemented as soon as possible.
Well, we already have.
Not a name.
Right, we have a policy in place.
We do, but he just said it's.
Inequated.
Not a very good one.
Well, it just says, don't do this, and literally.
Well, that's the way it was told to me, don't do this.
Is that it, I'm not?
Do you want it for Thursday, or do you want to take another look at it in another county?
What's your guys' thoughts, I think it'll be good on Thursday, as long as you get us updated in plenty of time, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
I, I mean, we can always, we can always.
Tweak it.
Tweak it, and this is obviously better than what we got right now.
Yeah, you got an hour after the meeting, but.
I don't, I don't understand, I don't follow an hour after the meeting.
That's it, he gets these changes made.
Business travel and reimbursement policy amendment.
Okay, this is just a tweak of the language that caused some confusion, or at the bottom of the first page, under meal allowance, now this policy, when we adopted it, it said, we're accepting the GSA Government Service Administration, I think they are accepting their per diem amounts, and this is one where an employee can go right into it, if you're traveling wherever, to what city, sometimes it's specific to the city on what the allowance is per meal, it works a lot like the travel reimbursement on the per mile, so if we reimburse, at this point, it's at sixty-two and a half cents per mile, then the employee doesn't need to report on their taxes, you know, the additional income, they're in effect saying the same thing, if you're traveling on business, here are the rates that we'll accept, that don't end up resulting in additional income that can be taxed. Our policy talked about the actual cost of any meal being reimbursed up to, okay, so that caused a little bit of confusion in one of our departments, they were saying, well, wait a minute, are we doing the per diem, are we doing, you know, a receipt? The intent was that we're just accepting that, you, the GSA number, and that's it. Under the rules that are set up in the, I forget what code this is, under the federal code, if we are not allowing more than what these, these amounts are, there's no need for receipts, because we've already determined this is the maximum amount for whatever area you're traveling to, so the attempt here is to just take out the confusing wording, and so now that sentence would just simply read, meals will be reimbursed at the US GSA M N I E rate, it's posted, and there's a link to the webpage, and the employees can. M N I E rate as posted and there's a link to the webpage and the employees can uh copy and paste if the link didn't work. Uh, but that's all this is, is to try to clean that up.
Why? I guess I, I read through that last night. I guess I, I don't, so you can't do both. You can't have receipts and utilize this. So why did we go with this and not just utilizing receipts?
Just because of the redundancy that comes with that. So if a receipt is turned in, then it's got to be processed and kept on file. Uh, we're eliminating all those steps by simply acknowledging what the federal government has said. Here are the caps for these meals in these locations.
Just to make it easier. Okay, it is what it is.
Looks good.
Okay, you guys okay with that?
So there's no paper trail on whether or not the meal was taken or not.
Nope.
There is not. So it just means that if I can stretch it just after six o'clock, I'm going to get reimbursed.
Now, we can, we can uh verify whether the stretching is legitimate or not. Because we never know where you're going. We know what you're doing there. We know when your business was concluded there. Everybody's saying it off the same page, yeah.
Well, it's pretty clear right here. I think, I like that departure time, return time, meal allowance, that uh item three there. Breakdown.
What's, what's the deal with uh after departure time after eight AM and after six PM return time, you get lunch and dinner? So if I take off at four PM and I come back at six PM or seven PM, I get lunch and dinner?
No, cause then you're leaving after twelve noon, returning after six o'clock. You're only going to get the dinner.
You just get dinner. Nice try.
But if you leave at seven fifty-five in the morning, come back at six oh five, you get three, so.
And probably scrutinized on your.
Come on, guys. Okay, I'm good with it. Are you guys good with that?
You, you don't think you would get a question from somebody about that?
Me?
You get a lot of questions from people.
No, I don't. But if I do, I will let you know.
All right.
Okay. Okay, that'll go on for a resolution. Uh, request to reschedule August eighteenth cow meeting at nine AM. I believe that's the week of the fair. I'm not sure. That does not work for me because that's a Thursday morning and the show is always at nine AM, but um, the five thirty is when the sale is. So I mean, is there that's where I was going to head with that. Is there any way we can?
I can't be there at the night one, that's why.
Yeah, is there any way we could change that to a different day that week? Wednesday would work for um which would be the seventeenth? Or even the sixteenth, but.
How about? We skip bear week altogether. Can we do a cow meeting on Monday night, the twenty-second? Or Monday morning?
It'd have to be an evening meal or evening.
After six, I'll buy you dinner, but. So we're gonna have a five thirty meeting. So if we had, you know, on the twenty-second, then we had a regular meeting at the twenty-fifth.
What does that give us adequate time for whatever decisions are made to put on for a resolution? That doesn't give a lot of time for, for that to be.
All right, how about this option? We skip the fair week. We have a cow meeting on the twenty-fifth and the regular meeting on the thirty-first.
Okay, but you've got a cow meeting scheduled for the first.
Yeah, why would we do that?
Oh, well, two days later, one day. Well, yeah. Well, um, September has five Thursdays. You want to advance the whole September meeting structure up one week? If we skip fair week, skip the fair week and a ma- cow meeting twenty-fifth, regular meeting? Well, we could have a regular meeting on the first of September.
Well, if we're gonna skip it, why not just skip it altogether and just continue on our regular schedule?
Yeah.
I mean, so we'll have more things to discuss at that ma- meeting. You know, there's lots of opportunity to discuss things at the meeting. We just will, will bypass.
Twenty-fifth, would you be willing to then make motions that were not discussed in a prior meeting?
Um, yeah, I mean, who knows what will come up and, and there's, there's, we can discuss them at the meeting before they're voted on and, and if we get the information prior to, um, I don't have a problem with that. I, we only used to have one committee, the whole meeting a month and.
We used to, yeah.
Well, if we um, it gets under our agenda by the deadline and we feel comfortable voting on it that, that we, then we do.
That's up to us.
If we don't, then we table it and.
Okay. Okay.
Let's get rid of that week.
Skip the meeting in the eighteen.
Correct. Are you okay with that, Tim?
Yeah.
Um, I guess we should have, we should have uh changed in the agenda. We should have, the administrator performance review, let's do that after public comment. Are you guys okay with that?
Oh, absolutely.
So I put uh the RFP, but we're gonna bypass that until next week, correct? Commissioner Scott? For the security?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So item five, we have public comment. This is for any, any uh subject matter. Rules are three minutes. Come on up, state your name, where you're from.
John Sheridan and I'm with the West Branch District Library and the director. And uh, in the county here, in the Herald here, a couple of weeks ago, you had some disbursements from the uh recovery plan monies and um library was overlooked. And I sent a letter to Tim explaining our situation. We've lost uh forty-one percent of our income because of COVID. Penal fines make up forty-one percent of our income. Now they're down to twenty-two percent. We are in dire need. If we do not get a sufficient amount in penal fines this fiscal year, we're probably going to have to cut back to our minimum legal limit, which is thirty-five hours a week. That's about eleven hours less a week than what we're giving now to the public. And um, we just got done redoing, redoing our elevator. That was eighty thousand dollars. We've cut into our, our revenue that we had set aside. According to our accountant, we need at least six months worth of monies in our accounts to run the library without any other income. And right now, that's kind of borderline. Uh, we have other things that need to be replaced. The building was about eighty-one. It's forty years old. Things are starting to go on it. For instance, our waterfall, we turned that on after earlier this year, about April. And we find that it leaks. That's gonna, we don't know if it's gonna be repairable. We don't know if it's gonna, it has to be replaced. Uh, like I said, we just got done with the elevator. There are some lights in our library that are continually blowing out. We're gonna have to replace that six thousand dollars and losing twenty percent of our revenue every year. I just can't compete with fast food restaurants. I'm gonna lay off staff. I'm not gonna be able to give the service the public wants for their public library, what they're used to. Our programming is probably going to be mostly canceled and we're just recovering on that uh from the COVID years. So I'm putting this out for consideration for the next meeting that we be given uh some of this recovery plan monies because that's what the money's there for, for places, for entities that have lost revenues because of the COVID. And because of government policies, we lost a lot of money. The courthouse was shut down during that uh time. So there was no revenue coming there because no penal fines were levied. So uh, I don't know what we're going to have this year, but in nineteen uh nineteen, we got a hundred and fifteen.
Your, your three minutes is up.
Okay.
How much money you had asked, you had asked a question or you had made the statement about uh um six months worth of, of penalty fines? What's the amount? Because originally when you came to us, you wanted the elevator. You said you, you've repaired that for the eighty thousand dollars. So has your amount that you requested from us changed?
Um, no, because we've lost, this would be our third year of loss.
Correct.
Okay, and we're looking at approximately uh until I get the figures in, um, we're looking at about eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars in losses over the three years.
But, but you had said six months worth of penalty, what you need to, to survive right now. Do you have that figure of what six months worth of penalty fines are?
That comes out every year. Uh, it's a yearly dispersment. It's not on a monthly or quarterly basis. It's strictly on a for instance, well, last year, our monies was sixty thousand dollars for the entire year. Year before that, it was ninety-nine thousand.
So for six months would be thirty thousand dollars.
Maybe.
Correct?
Hmm, maybe.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
I've got, I don't know.
Asking.
Yeah, I don't know. That, I can only tell you what we've got. It may be forty thousand this year. I don't know. Until the penal fines are calculated, I don't know what I'm going to get.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you approach the city and the other townships that fall under the district library? If you ask them for funding through their ARPA grants, uh, they've received or even just coming to the county as a whole.
Well, I'm coming to the county because our.
Cause there is more than one library system in Ogumaw County.
There is. And I don't, I don't know what they have suffered from their, I would, I don't, I have no idea.
They have, it's as bad as you have, trust me.
And I, well, I would assume that that would be the case. And I I think we need to have the help, the lo- both library systems need the help. I'm speaking strictly for the West Branch District, right? I understand. And the reason for my question is, I know that
the other district library has approached the townships. They have not approached us as the county. Now you're coming here and asking the county, but you haven't approached the townships or the city. I think it would be fair for both sides to approach everybody. Because if we were to give, let's say, one district library money, but not the other, now we're playing favorites and that's not what we're here to do.
There's.
What have responses have gotten from the townships?
We don't ask the townships for their money.
Right, no, but I'm saying, he, he mentioned that the uh other, the Ogumaw County District Library has asked the townships for some monies, whether the response has been from the other townships to them.
I don't, I think that you're gonna have to find that out. I don't think we can give those answers. I mean, that's not information. Now, my township serves two libraries. There is the Village of Prescott has a library and then Mills Town also has a library.
It falls under the same system.
And the village is on, is, is possibly going to be closing because of funding.
Yeah, I one of the township I represent is in that same group because there's library in rural city, Prescott, Mills. That's the other library district.
Okay.
So I've heard those reports.
Yeah, thank you. Next. Come on up, ma'am.
President of the library, important township supervisor. I appreciate you who recognized your doing this passing. We lost a super member there. Okay, I also lost my daughter-in-law the next day. But I came to this board meeting for one major reason. This library services the community. Everybody has a right to come to it, Mark. Cause she's gonna cut me up through it, I know.
Go ahead.
Library elevator is why we came to you to begin with. It was an eighty thousand dollar project. We're sitting in violation of the Disability Act and we got no help. I'm sorry, I don't think that we're supporting our county rights. If you can buy a truck or a vehicle for dogs, if you, and I have nothing to do with equalization, I totally support it. If you can buy these things, you can help your libraries. We came because we needed it desperately. We're sitting with people who work in the library, who volunteer in the library, I should say, who couldn't get down, as you said, those steps. They couldn't get to the book downstairs to get what they needed. So we have had to use what we had in storage after all of our penal costs. All of our other inventories were cut. John came to me and he said, Karen, what do you think? And I'm gonna throw this out because I'm gonna step out of line. What do you think about coming to the townships that are a part of this library, which is the majority? And asking them to donate part of our harbor money? I said, I guess I would say fine, except you all know there has been a lawsuit going on because we have a township who does not give us all of our money. It's captured through DDA. And you are aware of that, Mark?
Yes, I am.
You all are aware of what's happened. West Branch Township keeps part of the library money, which was Millie's money. You can talk about any language you want, but it still hurts the library. Ogumaw Township and the city of West Branch gave us back the money. All right, West Branch won't. So I think that our, our request for you to help us is very important. And I think that our library for our children is very important. We work with the school systems. We have a fantastic summer program. How many of you've been in the library lately?
I've been in there, but it's probably been three, six months.
Yeah. And how many of you have ever tried to go down those stairs, which is what we really came for the first sale by? I'd like you to try it. I had a fractured foot. As a board member, I needed to go downstairs. Anyone else want to go hopping down the stairs? It's a real thrill. You know, about this big, and if you've got big feet, you're gonna fall off. But we couldn't use the luck, the elevator because it was unsafe. We couldn't get our county to help us. I have a problem, Tim. I'm adamant, you said I was, you're right, Mark. And I said to John, don't go ask for money because my people are playing near Millage. It is going to the library. Your people are having part of their money taken back into DDA. And I'm not saying DDA isn't important. But I'm saying Ogumaw Township, or Ogumaw County, you need to help your libraries, all of them. If they wanted the money, they should have came to. We came.
Thank you. You're up. Any other? Come on up, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi, your name?
Kathy Sherry, Foster Township uh trustee. Um, I have a very brief statement. Um, in Ogumaw County, what attracts people to our county? Jobs, shopping, hospitals, schools, education. The library is very important to this community and I think you should consider helping us out. That's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on over here, Tom.
Tom Spencer, I'll talk as a taxpayer. The only thing I wanted to say is I, I made an observation sitting back there about the nine-one-one millage. And I think there's confusion as to what actually is being looked at today. Correct me if I'm wrong. In a quite, in a non-question and answer session, if you alter that number that goes on the ballot, say you lowered to point six, you can't use the term same anymore, can you? Because you're changing that number.
Is the word same in the language?
Yes, and people get scared when they don't see the word same or renewal. So basically what I'm saying is I would encourage the board to move forward with the point seven five. And if the board wants to collect less after they get the information, they can do that. But you could be baking a ripple effect mistake for nine-one-one. Because people may not vote on that less millage because I don't think you can use the term same if you change that number. They may think it's an addition or a new millage.
You look into that?
Contact the attorney about that. But same, same millage level that was previously approved.
Correct, but you're not, you're looking at possibly altering that number for the ballot. And if you vote on point.
Oh, I see what you mean.
If you put point six on the ballot, you can't go back to point seven five.
Well, we know that aspect, but as far as your wording, so then it wouldn't be a renewal. It would be a whole, how people may look at it would be a whole new millage.
Correct. And if you lower that number for the ballot, you can't, if you put point six on that ballot, you can't collect point seven four.
Right, that we know.
You can put point seven four on there and collect point six.
Right, right, right.
That we know, but you're wording at, that's, that's, that's a valid point. But I, I see your point a hundred percent and, and the other point of that is, is also if we look, we, we need to see these numbers.
Correct. I wholeheartedly, I just don't want it, I don't want you to lower it for a period of five years because you can't go back up then.
We know that.
You can do it in-house with a point seven five approval and collect point six.
I think that's what was agreed upon with all of us.
In the same.
In the discussion.
Four of us. Four of us, don't speak for me.
So I'm reading the context of the word same here. It's referencing the prior millage, which was point seven five.
Correct.
That, that's, that's what that's saying. Same millage level previously approved by the voters.
Correct.
Federal backs, but.
If you lower that, can you use that term same?
You could not. That's what I'm saying. I, I, I would be in fear that the voters might not vote for it because the term same.
I, I, I would be in fear that the voters might not vote for it because the term same is.
See that point a hundred percent, but then again, also, we are in a different place as a whole, from a county standpoint of where we were five years ago.
Correct.
So I get what you're saying, a hundred percent. It.
And I think the nine-one-one authority, my opinion, is still in its infant stages where you guys reduced MSU, you reduced veterans because you saw those numbers and you've got four years worth.
And they were on board with reducing those numbers.
Correct, oh, absolutely, absolutely. I just, I, I don't wanna, I don't want a five-year mistake being made.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Three minutes is up. Come on up. Hi, what's your name, ma'am?
I'm Thierry Barnhart and I represent West Branch Township. The township that's not, um, complying with the, the law. I don't know if everybody's familiar with this, but the whole wording thing, um, with the renewal for our millage is what caught us up short because my township, um, is saying because we, and we have the, the wording approved by a lawyer and we were, we were told to use the word renewal so people would know that it was a renewal of the amount. So when the law passed, the DDA's couldn't capture library monies. They hung on the word renewal because in the old millage, they could, you know, collect money. So, you know, we thought we were doing our due diligence, having the language approved. I explain all that to say, I'm not very comfortable going to my township right now to ask for money for the elevator because they're kind of upset for me for siding with the library, trying to get funding because our funding's down. So when you mentioned, you know, why aren't we going to the townships? I felt more comfortable coming to this group to ask help in paying for our elevator. Um, because I don't know if my township right now would, um, be very gracious to me coming to them with a request.
Can't throw you in jail for asking.
Yeah, well, so anyway, I, and I honestly, because I'm, I've gotten quite an education from just coming to this meeting, I did not know that the townships, my township got, um, COVID funding or whatever the, yes, yes, yes. And when I was told this group, you know, the county had, so as a board, we decided to approach you. So just a little for your explanation.
Thank you. Any other public comment? In the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone. We are, the next is a closed session for administrative performance review.
I moved to, moved to closed session. I had a request of the administrator to go over the performance review.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott?
Support.
Support from Christopher Serbuk, roll call vote.
I'm Serbuk.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Brad Becker.
Yes.
Ron Don.
Yes.
And there'll be no further business coming back into, coming out of concession, correct?
Hey, what happened there?
I know, I gotta run now.
Oh, my God. Ordered it. I don't know, I would like to make a motion to adjourn at eleven-twelve.
Hi.
I'm in favor.
Right, hi.
Eleven-twelve, thank you, guys.